Okay, let's call this meeting in order. It's five thirty for my time, not that time. I'm gonna stand for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Constitution, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, Bill of Rights, and justice for all. Admittedly notices meetings with advertising Hasbury Park Press and the Beacon on Thursday, August eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, and as amended on October sixth, two thousand twenty-two for continuation, and by posting the notice at Fort Cora Post Office, Logan Harbor Post Office by filing a copy of the notice with the latest attention of clerks required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call, please.
Mr. Armato?
Present.
Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Present.
Mrs. McAvoy?
I'm here.
Mrs. Downing?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon? Mr. Polino?
Present.
Okay.
All right, so, hi, Mary Ann, how are you?
Hi, good, how are you?
I'm good. So before we get started, and I know you don't have this in front of you, I gave each of the board members a folder, and in that folder, on the right-hand side, is the list of sample board goals that you provided me.
Okay.
So that's on the right side of your pockets. Does everybody see that? Okay. And then on the left side, Mary Ann, is the memo that you provided the board that summarized the board retreat that took place on August eighteenth. And I just want to go over that very quickly before we get started. That started with our mission statement, an outline of our strategic plan goal areas, a review of the board's self-evaluation, a summary of the goal-setting process, then our twenty-one, twenty-two board superintendent goals, I'm sorry, district superintendent goals, not board goals, and you're gonna explain that in a moment. And then a draft of our twenty-two, twenty-three goals that we discussed at the board retreat. And then from there, I was going to refine them and share a draft with the full board. And in November, even though we, and when I say we, the administration, to include Sharon and Will, we've started working on most of all of these goals, we will formally adopt them at the November board meeting. So I know there's gonna be some discussion of those tonight. And then our goal today, tonight, is to develop board goals which are vastly different from district superintendent goals, which I know you're going to explain. And then the last thing is, on the left-hand side, is the draft, and I don't have draft on here, but it is a draft because we haven't fore-approved them yet, is a draft of the twenty-two, twenty-three district superintendent.
Okay.
So before you get started, I just want to talk a little bit about our rationale, and Will, Sharon, and I worked on these at length. So, and I've had conversations with several board members, if not all, about especially the student achievement goals. So, one of the things that we discussed at our board retreat was developing an SAT goal. So I worked with the Director of Guidance, or Supervisor of Guidance, Dr. Purperay, in developing the SAT goal, which sets a baseline, which, moving forward, we will work from that baseline. And then the Algebra I goal is not one that we discussed the night of our board retreat, however, it's something that Mr. Zalinski and I talked about because in order to be successful in the SAT goal, our students have to improve in their Algebra I goals. That's a lot of focus on the high school. We talked about state school ranking, but one of the things that I've discussed with several board members is that the criteria for the state school ranking is set by so many, for lack of a better word, institutions, and it's not something we can control. But I do believe that if we were to pick a ranking system, that that is a longitudinal goal that we can achieve once we focus on SAT, Algebra I, and of course, the NWEA, which is a K through twelve assessment that we use. So I did not include the state ranking goal this time around, but that's something that we can certainly keep an eye on and discuss, especially as, because there's been a little bit of controversy on state ranking. And I really want to work with Mr. Zalinski and flush that out and talk about what those implications would be for public school districts. And then moving on from there, we included, I included our discussions on redistricting options to support universal preschool. Those two are interwoven, but they're also very separate, and we will continue to talk about that in our ad hoc redistricting committee meetings. Then we also talked about the implementation of a special education advisory committee. I know several board members have talked about the importance of integrating not only our special ed students, but our general ed students along with our special ed students. So that's a goal. And then we have our facilities and finance, and I further refined that to include the development of a grant writing committee, which we've already started, and a safety, which, a safety goal which relates very much to facilities and a lot of other overarching areas.
And we had talked about the safety goal when I was there.
I'm sorry?
We had talked about the safety goal when we were together in August.
Yeah, and so this past summer, we spent a lot of time talking about developing a reunification plan, which we've been working really hard on. So overall, if you were to break them down, there are seven goals, which I know are a lot.
Many.
But if we were to back those up a little bit, really, three of them are under student achievement. So I'll let you provide your input on that. I'm obviously not doing these all by myself, so.
No, but you will be evaluated on them. And so what I would recommend is that if you contain, if three of those goals go under student achievement, then student achievement is the goal, you know? And then you have those three other pieces that are objectives underneath there instead of being separate goals. And that way, you have four goals. You would have four goals, right?
Right, so then if we were to lump those three and make those one goal, then the universal pre-K is two, three, then it would be five goals, right? Because.
Okay.
Right?
Yes. Dr. Claire, Dr. Pereira, I still think that's a lot to put on you. I've been researching goals throughout the internet in different districts, and this is a lot more goals than any other superintendent has. I mean, we don't want to set you up for failure, and we want you to be successful and to achieve your goals. This is a lot. And plus, we're going into November. Normally, the goals are set a month or two ago. So this is a lot when you'll be getting evaluated in June, and it's already almost the start of November.
Well, so then the only, then the suggestion I can make is, I know it's November, but like I said earlier, we've started all of these. The Special Education Advisory Committee is really the work of Mr. Bond and the CPAG. So we can take that away as one of my goals, but still know that we're gonna do it.
Could we make that a board goal? That, could that somehow become a board goal? To focus on that as a board?
I don't know, Mary Ann, your thoughts on that?
So tell me what that goal is again?
So I'm gonna read it to you. It says. Can you?
No, I can hear you.
Can you, you can hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so it's, it reads, "Implementation of a Special Education Advisory Committee. By June two thousand twenty-three, develop a Special Education Advisory Committee made up of parents, staff, and students to meet quarterly to explore programs that will encourage special education students to interact more regularly with their general education peers."
That really is a district goal. So, were you able to hear that?
Yes.
Okay, so what I would say is, anything, so of those three things that are now going to be underneath the special, the student achievement goal, anything there that's more long-term, that might be a two-year goal instead of a one-year goal to be complete, because your district goals are, you would be looking to complete those by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three, unless there's something in there that you can stipulate a piece of is going to be completed by June two thousand twenty-three, and then the next piece of that is completed by June two thousand twenty-four, something like that. So it gives you some more time. Because what I don't want to see happen, and I'm not sure who said it, but this is a lot. And, and I don't want you to be set up for failure either. We want you to be set up for success, and certainly for the district to be set up for success. So even though other people may be responsible for a lot of these things, you're still going to be evaluated on those because they're district goals, and that's what the board evaluates you on partly. A good percentage of your evaluation is on district goals.
Okay, so hold on one second, please. So let me just coordinate the questioning here. So what I'm led to believe what you just said, Mary Ann, is that we could take some of her goals, or the ones she can pick that she feels she's going to need more time for and refine that from instead of a one-year to a two-year? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
All right, and that'd be left up to her to decide? Or is that the board decision to decide on?
I think it can be a conversation, and, you know, for everybody to be able to have input into. But I think that you want to be careful about the things that you make do on or achieved by June two thousand twenty-three, because we're now already three months into, by the time they're approved, we're three months in. So that's really leaving Dr. Pereira nine months to be able to complete those goals. So, and I don't think that the board wants to set her up for failure either, because that means that the district is not improving. And this is all about improving the district. So I think if you can work together to come up with what pieces of those are doable by June two thousand twenty-three, and then if there are other pieces there, they can be started to work towards, but they might not be achievable until June of two thousand twenty-four. You can have a multi-year goal.
Correct.
Okay, so real quickly, so, because we have an hour tonight before we go into private session, we do have to work on board goals. How would this proceed from here about getting, you know, we could start a discussion, but I really don't want to have the whole night be focused on this. I want to get the other stuff in too, but we do have a long meeting tonight. So how can we, as a board, we work through committees, continue this discussion and work, you know, with Dr. Pereira to get these refined?
Mr. Polino, the only problem, the next finance meeting's not, it's on November fourteenth.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's.
So we, we want, how, do we need to have another public session to do this again, to work on this, or?
You might, you might want to, just a workshop session, to be able to have a conversation about district goals. You can say that no action's going to be taken, and it's just a workshop session on the district goals for conversational purposes.
All right, so, and I know you have a question, and I know you have a question also. So to, to, because we're already three months behind with refining the district goals, would it behoove us to work on these goals tonight and get them refined? Because we're here, because we don't want to lose another month on these, and then have another meeting for our board goals? Would that be something we should look at doing tonight?
That, that's a possibility, certainly.
Okay, so if you guys are okay with that, we're gonna, we're gonna work on this?
Yeah.
And see where we end up with, and then we'll go from there. Okay, Ms. Claus, you have a question?
So I guess two things. So the SATs, we can make that a two-year goal because you're targeting PSATs, so we can follow that grade. We can compare the kids that are taking the SAT now to the PSAT, because that's your goal, and follow those kids to the SAT.
Right.
I think that would kind of make sense.
At the bottom, Kim, where it says, "Spring of two thousand twenty-three SAT scores will serve as a baseline," so yeah, it's a two-year goal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So that would fix that. And then the other, I just want to throw this out there. I know, and I've mentioned this to Dr. Pereira already and some of the board members, that we did discuss as a whole to improve our state ranking, and we all agreed our last meeting. And then it was changed to Algebra I. And I know the reasons why Dr. Pereira changed it, but I just want to make everybody aware that when we left the last meeting, we felt that this state school ranking was important to all of us. So I still feel it's important, and I would like it on there. I know the reasons why they took it out. But, you know, I just wanted to voice my concerns.
Well, we're trying to take things out, not add things.
We've been hearing a lot about it through parents and, you know, of course, Facebook. This, our school ranking is an issue, and people do want to see that addressed. So I know your theory is to improve Algebra I, and that will improve our scores, which will improve our ranking. But if there's any techniques that we can do to improve our state ranking and make it showable, I think that's what our community is looking for. So I would like to keep that in, but.
Okay, that's duly noted, and just to reiterate that, I think that, like Dr. Pereira said, you know, rankings are done by editor, you know, papers, editorials, whatever it might be, and whatever institutions do that ranking, which we have and she has no control over. But again, I think if we increase our bottom-line education of algebra, that's going to inadvertently increase our school rankings. I don't think it should be a quantitative qualifier for her to achieve, but it's something that we could say, this is something we'd like to see, but we're not gonna hold her accountable if it doesn't happen. That's my opinion. Dr., Mrs. Downing, you have something to say?
Yeah, I was, in the atmosphere of cutting back a little, could we cut back on number four? Since we don't know, can we make that a two-year? Because what if we don't get the grant? You know, like.
Right.
I mean, that's so iffy.
Yeah, and Mr. Zalinski made a good point. That word "explore" there really doesn't set itself up for a goal.
No.
I mean, it's something we're doing with ad hoc, with the ad hoc committee.
But I don't know if you want to put that as your goal.
Could that be a board goal?
So, Mary Ann, the question is, number four says, "Continue to explore redistricting options to provide universal pre-K." So because of the fact that it involves outside grants and, you know, applying to the state, getting back from them, it also involves our physical plant and moving things around, would that be more of a board goal and take it off of the shoulders of Dr. Pereira and have that be our objective to try to explore and navigate the ways of pre-K?
That's really more of a district goal and more of a, you know, the superintendent's responsibility to do that. I'm not sure that the board would have the time and the ability to actually, you know, go through all of the things that would need to be gone through to do that exploration. So I think that that falls more under the superintendent's responsibility. And I know that that's something that you've been working on, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Mr. Polino, I agree with Mrs. Downing. We know Dr. Pereira's going to continue to explore redistricting because we do have it as an ad hoc committee. So I don't think she should be evaluated on that, and I think that's one that we can get rid of to downsize.
So what do you think on that table?
On this side of the table, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
A lot of these goals, I honestly feel, are gonna be the easiest time of ever to achieve only to the fact of COVID, that students were out of the classroom for how long? Now they're back in the classroom, and we're gonna see everything rising from COVID to non-COVID, going up easier. There is a lot of goals, but I feel it's this actual timeframe, they're gonna be a little bit easier to achieve, with that being noted.
So, so are, you're saying the lead to goals as they are?
Well, what do you think of goal number four?
I think that is the goal that can come out.
I think.
Sure. Which one exactly?
Goal four.
Number four. Number four, okay.
Yeah, agreed.
You okay?
Yeah.
I'm looking for Ed, and he's not there. You want to be Ed tonight, Mr. Zalinski?
What's that?
Never mind.
Ed, yes.
Never mind. Mr. Armato, how do you feel on that?
I feel it's good, just so I can be clear. This is a goal we're taking off for the immediate future, but something we're gonna continue to explore as time goes by, correct?
Yes.
Well, we're still gonna continue to do it. It's just not gonna be a goal that'll be evaluated on.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
All right, so we're all good with that one?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
So four is done.
So we'll, yeah, we'll remove four, but keep continuing doing it as we're doing it.
And threes are two-year? Three, number threes would be a two-year goal?
So, right, so what I'm gonna do then is, like Mary Ann said, improve overall student achievement through the following is goal number one. NWEA will stand, right, Will? Because that's something that we can measure by June.
Yes.
And Algebra I is something we can measure by June.
June or July, yes.
And the SAT. So if we turn that, Mary Ann, into a two-year goal, does it stay on as a goal now?
Yeah, it can, because you'll have different strategies that you're going to work on this year than you'll build on in the upcoming year. So you will be evaluated on the strategy. So remember, you're gonna complete the action plans, okay? And the strategies for the SATs that you want to accomplish by June twenty-third will be, whether they've been accomplished or not will be what you're, part of your evaluation.
Okay.
And then next year, that will be continued. Well, you know, likely I'll come in over the summer and we'll continue that goal because now you'll have strategies that will build on what you've already done.
Okay, good. So then the way I'm reading it so far is, then improve overall student achievement is goal number one.
Can I add the goal number one? How is that measurable? Are we gonna use SGOs to measure that?
What?
No, it's our NWEAs.
NWEA and Algebra I.
They take a three-year. All right, thank you.
And so then it's the NWEA, Algebra I, and then SAT to a two-year. Goal number two then is gonna be the Listen and Learns. And then Special Education can be goal number three. And then the Finance and Facilities, continue to explore various avenues for revenue in the district, will be goal number four. I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Good.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Do you want to vote on that? Excuse me? Do you want to do a vote on it?
No, because we're, we're gonna be doing, it's gonna be brought up for November, right?
Yeah, so, Mary Ann, we'll approve those at the November board meeting, and then I'll post them, but we're gonna, we're working on these every day leading up till the November board meeting.
Sure.
Yeah. And I've already developed the action plans.
Great.
So I will just then refine them to reflect what we did here.
Right, and then share that with the board on, at the November meeting.
I will.
So that they can see those. And then when you give an update in January, I would encourage you to give an update in January, because then if you have any new board members, they'll be able to see what these goals are and understand them a little bit better. And what the board will want to do is take a look at those action plans and say, and part of your reporting out will, should be, everything that was supposed to be completed by December thirty-first of this year, have those action items been completed? And then what are we moving into for the next time? So that they can see that these things are being checked off, and they're being accomplished. Because that way, they know that the progress is really ongoing with each of these goal areas. And it's a really good visual for the board to be able to have, to see those things get checked off and to see that, that you do, what those indicators of success are, and that they've been achieved. Because that lets them know that the progress is moving forward on each of the goals.
Okay.
And Mary Ann, how often is the actions done that we will get an update on? Is that a monthly thing, or bi-weekly, or?
So that's something that the board and the superintendent should have a conversation on. And what I would suggest is that you, so typically, you would do November. So the board, the goals are gonna be approved in November. So you'll do January. I would encourage you to do March, because March is when you need to be able to start doing the superintendent's evaluation. So that way, you can have that update, that really good update on how you're doing towards the district goals. Because remember, in order to get the superintendent's evaluation done by July first, from soup to nuts, that means every part of it's done, it's signed, sealed, and delivered by July first, you're actually evaluating on satisfactory progress towards the district goals. And that's why those progress reports are so important. So you may not see a goal achieved by the time you do, when, when you're doing the superintendent's evaluation, because those goals are still in progress. But you want to know that satisfactory progress is being made. That's why you need to look at those action plans to see that those things are being checked off, is done, and you are making, the superintendent is making great progress, is achieving those goals. So you want to do, so typically, I would say November, January, March, and then, because you're getting ready to do the evaluation. So you want to have a really bang-up, you know, progress report in March. And then you want to have June, your last, your last meeting in June, so that the superintendent can really wrap things up and let you know what all has been accomplished. And then if there's anything that needs to be carried over, you know at that June meeting, okay, these are things, like the SAT piece, that the next part of the SAT piece is gonna be carried over as a district goal for next year as well. Make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, but, so the action plans you're saying will be presented to us in January and March?
Yes, and in, and also in June.
All right, but so November, because we're approving these in November, she still can give us an action plan based on what she's doing for now?
Yes.
All right, so we all understand, so there's, there's no, right? So we're gonna get action plans, November, January, and March, on the goals that are set here, of what she's been accomplishing, checked off on this little thing, right? We all understand that?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Okay, also remember, the action plans are how the superintendent is going to get you from point A to point B, okay? They have to be her plan for the district. So the board should not be involved in saying, no, we don't want you to go this way, we want you to do something else. You have determined in those, in those goal areas as to what you want to see happen. And now it's up to the superintendent to make sure that she can provide you with the how. And you evaluate her on how she's doing towards that how, okay? But if you go into the weeds of the action plan items, the superintendent could say, well, I felt I could get us here if we used my plan, but the board insisted on me doing it this way, and I couldn't get us there. If that happens, you can't hold her accountable for not achieving that goal.
Quick question. If she feels that the how she suggested Quick question, if she feels that the how she suggested to make things improve is not working. And she wants to change her route of how she's going to attack it, can she resubmit another action plan, what she's going to do?
Yes, so what, what should be happening in those updates is if things aren't, if things aren't falling into place the way the superintendent felt that they were going to fall into place. Or there were things that, you know, were hindering cer- certain things. I mean, if there's anything we learned through COVID is that things happen and sometimes things can't happen the way we expected them to or we wanted them to. So if something happens and the superintendent says, we need to take, I need to take a different direction with that. She just needs to let you know and say, this, this particular item, we're cha, I'm changing this to this. And this is why, and this is how I feel this will actually get us there.
I'd like to also put some type of clause in there for her. If something drastically happens again, like COVID or whatever it might be, or something like that, that the timelines aren't met due to that because there was an extraordinary, you know, something that happened. It gives her a little leadway, says, hey, wait a minute, you know, I was dealing with this, this, and this. You know what I mean? Not all bets are off, we'll just postpone it a little bit, that's all, we're not going to.
Right, and one of the, one of the things that happened with COVID, especially in that first year in 1920, between 2019 and, and 2020. Whenever I say 1920, I think people think I'm talking about the year 1920. It was the school year, I wasn't alive in 1920, no, I was not. Close, but not quite. But we know that things happened in 2019, 20. And there were great plans that were happening, supposed to happen over the spring of that year, from January to June. And they simply couldn't happen because you had, you all had to pivot on a dime. And you had to make, you know, transitional plans into, you know, being able to do teaching and learning from home and, and virtually and all of that. So at that point, when we were talking to boards about the superintendent's evaluation, we were saying. You need to be able to understand that some of these things, because of what happened. You can't hold the superintendent accountable for not achieving because they simply could not have happened, given the circumstances. So those are things that are always things that, you know, there are always things that might happen that you might not be able to. I mean, COVID was a great example of something that really made it so that some superintendents simply could not achieve the goals that the board and the superintendent had set. So there's always that, that kind of cooperation and that understanding that sometimes things happen that are outside of our control. You know, it's not the superintendent saying, oh, I don't feel like working on that, so I'm just not going to, I'm not going to bother with it.
So Marion, quick question, if, if there's a change in direction in one or multiple goals. Is that something that the board has to re-adopt and re-approve? Or we just let her go with what she's going with?
No, I think it's a communication issue that you should both be, you know, that the board should be aware of, that we're changing directions here. This is why, and this is how I feel this direction is going to enable us to, to get there better and maybe faster or more efficiently. So that communication, I think, should happen. But the board doesn't actually approve the action plans. You approve and adopt the district goals, but not the action plans.
That'll be for review, and I'll have that in November, and then we'll take a look at them again in January.
Good.
All right, everybody good?
Yes.
So do we have a little bit of time?
Yeah, we have until 6:30.
So Marion, then we may not be able two and a half an hour develop the board goals, I don't know, maybe we will. But maybe go over why the board goals are so much different than district goals?
Absolutely.
And what the board should be thinking about in terms of developing those based on those samples that you gave us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So if, if somebody can advance the slides for me, and thank you. So really, board goals are the foundation for improved governance. They help you with policymaking, they help you with continuous improvement, with communication, making your communication more effective. It holds, holds the board accountable to itself. And it can also help to build a cohesive team. Okay, next slide? Next one, sorry. So this is, and I know you probably all have to turn to see this, right? I'm sorry. I will send, well, you have it from your, your goal-setting packet from when I was there in August. But we talk about the goals, the district goals as being, they belong to the district, they belong to the superintendent to achieve. But the board still has to support and provide the resources for those district goals. So district goals have to do with curriculum and instruction, they have to do with teaching and learning. They have to do with HR, human resources, personnel, professional development, facilities and finance, and usually communication and community engagement. Board goals have to do with process and governance. So there are things like on your sample goals. You know, now, I think you, you actually completed the evaluation in a timely manner, but some boards have a problem with that. So, you know, develop an effective communications plan amongst the board. This wouldn't be a district communications plan, but this would be a board communication plan on how you communicate with each other and with the superintendent. Enhance committee effectiveness to improve student achievement through focused discussions. Those could be discussions that you have on a regular basis about student achievement. How are we doing? How are our students doing? What things can we do to support the superintendent and the district in improving those things? And part of that is the district goals, so you're going to support those. Obtaining professional development for the board team, that can really help the board to come together and to be cohesive. I'm working with a lot of boards right now who are trying to build that cohesive team. Because they realize that they're a little bit apart from one another and they don't really come together that often. So it allows time for training and to be able to get to know each other in a different way, outside of just your boardsmanship. So that you can understand when people come to the table, why they may ask certain questions, why they might vote certain ways. It helps you to understand people in a different way. You could look to achieve board certification or master board certification. Improve board governance by holding four training sessions over the, the course of the year. And remember, my coming in doesn't cost you anything outside of your due structure. Only strategic planning and superintendent searches are fee-based services. So those are all things that you could do. Try to develop a more purposeful relationship between the board and administration. We can do a retreat that involves your administrative team as well as the board members. And we get, again, we get to know each other a little bit differently, to be able to work better together. If you feel that your committee structure isn't working well, you might want to investigate and discuss various forms of governance. Or explore joint ventures with the township committee. Do you have a liaison, a board liaison that goes to committee meetings? Or a committee, a township committee liaison that comes to board meetings? Those are things that you may want to take a look at. You know, there's, there's a bunch of different options on here. I'm not sure, you know, what, where you would like to, to particularly see. I would suggest two goals to start with, because you really haven't had board goals before. They were all kind of wrapped in together. And I think that that might have made it difficult for the board to determine what we're evaluating the superintendent on. What piece of those, of those goals belong to the superintendent and what belonged to the board. So I think this will make it a little bit cleaner for you to be able to see that. You can go to the next slide? So the board governance cycle, we're, we're really at that point in the fall now. You have your, your district goals that we've talked about in August and that you're kind of solidifying tonight. And they'll be, they can be adopted in November. Then you'll have your progress reports, your updates. That, as I said, can be November, January, March, and June. And then you'll be going into the superintendent's evaluation and the board self-evaluation again. And then we get to the summer and we'll be doing board and district goal setting again. Next slide? So this is your mission statement, which I can't read.
The mission statement you can't read?
I can't see it because there's a glare on the screen.
You can read it if you want us to read it, go ahead.
That would be great.
The mission of the Lacy Township School District is to inspire excellence in each student's educational experience and to instill strong values of pride and tradition.
So that's something that you definitely want to keep in mind. So those were the district goals that we had come up with back in, in August. And I do have those right over here. So supporting and continuing with the district goals could certainly be something, you know, supporting and providing the resources for the district goals could be a board goal. Or you may want to look at, you know, your governance structure on becoming a certified board. To become a certified board, you need 16 credits over four years. A credit equals an hour, so back in August, you got two credits for that. I would have to, I wonder if I can do this right now, hold on. Let's see if this will work. I'm trying to see if I can see how many credits you have. Okay, that may take too much time. So I'm trying to do that. So I will look at your credits for what you have now and see what you would need. Did I say, Dr. Prer, did I say in the memo how many credits the board had?
It says, I am very pleased to report that the board currently has now achieved nine board academy credits toward board certification.
Okay, so tonight gives you 10. Okay, so you would need six more credits. And did I say anything about credits falling off?
It says, 16 credits are required within a four-year period to achieve board certification. The board would need an additional seven credits by May 2023 to achieve board certification if they desire that certification.
Okay, so now you would need six more credits after tonight, okay? Because you'll get a credit for tonight, a credit equals an hour. So we could see about my coming in and I could do, I could facilitate your ethics discussion in January, maybe? After your new board members are, are sworn in, that would be a good thing to do. We could then talk about the evaluation process in March. Ethics is, is generally taking about an app, one to two hours, depending on the conversation that's had and the questions that are had. So that could be two hours, the evaluation process could be another hour, that would be three. Then you do the board self-evaluation, and if we do goal setting before June. That could, that could give you the six credits that you need by then. And when I get, when I get home, because you, I'm sure you can see I'm in another district. So in order to get this done, I'm someplace else, I'm up in Hudson County. But I can look and see how many credits might fall off after 2023 and then see what we would need to do. So I'll put that in a memo after tonight.
So then, just, just to summarize, so as of tonight, we have 10.
Yep.
If the board were to set this to be a goal by June of 2023, then it almost sounds like it's achievable.
It is, I think it is achievable. It's, it depends on, you know, the board's willingness to, to be able to meet. And I understand that boards are very busy and that you do have, you know, long meetings and such. But I'm willing to work with you. Let me take a look at what, what might fall off after June of 2023. Because we may want to make that a goal that goes into the fall of 2023. To be accomplished, to become certif, a board, to achieve board certification by, maybe by December 2023. Instead of it being June, and that would be doable also. Okay, so let me look at that tonight, when I get home, and see what we would need to do to do it by, by June. And what we would need to do, what kind of credits you would need by December, okay? And I can let you know that.
Does everybody like that goal?
I love it, I was going to even suggest that, so.
Yeah.
I love it, I think.
I'm good.
You good, Donna?
The training is good.
Yeah, as far as, not advertising, but something for the board, just to make it better for us to communicate more. Is it possible to put some of these dates in Google Calendar? Each board member has their own Google Calendar because you have a Google email address. And you just click them, right? Everything's. Just add it into our Google Calendar, our, our goals, our dates, and, you know what I mean, our November, our March, or different things in there, that way it's just in there and it just, hey, you gotta have, you know, that way we can look at, hey, what do I have the next month ahead to work on? What do I have this to work on or that?
Of course you would have to, you know, all, at least more than a majority we can agree to be to these dates, you know? Because everybody's going in different.
You would need more than a majority of the board to be there with the superintendent and the business administrator. So at least five of, of seven of you would need to be there.
Right, so we need at least more than a majority to be here.
It's one more than a majority, yeah. Okay, but I'll take a look at your credits once I get home, I can't access it right now. But I'll take a look at it when I get home and I'll send you an email in the morning letting you know exactly what we would need to do by June 2023 and what we would need to do if, if credits fall off. Because they're available for four years. And then board credits do fall off. So then I'll see what we would need to do by December of 2023 to get that certification, okay? And I can let you know.
Did you have any more slides or anything that you wanted?
Can you go to the next slide? Let's see, what do I have here? So typically, so we would talk, we've already talked about some of this. You know, in the samples of the board goals, you can go to the next one. Then we would come up with, with your board goals. And I think, you know, becoming certified, achieving board certification. And we can fill in which that's going to be, whether it'll be June or December of 2023. And then would you also like to support and provide the resources needed to achieve the district goals as a board goal?
Can you repeat that, Marion? That question?
Can you repeat that?
Yes, would you like the other board goal to be, to support, the board will support and provide the resources needed for the superintendent to achieve the district goals?
I don't know what that means.
So elaborate on it if you can.
So if the superintendent comes to you, it's, it's basically supporting the district goals that, that you've all agreed to tonight. And then providing the resources that are needed. So for instance, if the superintendent comes to you, say you have 30 kids in two second-grade classes. And you know that that's going to be in third grade. So the superintendent comes to you and she says, I'd really like to hire a teach, an additional teacher for third grade. And that word, or for second grade, and that will take 10 kids out of the one class and 10 kids out of the other. So there will be three 20-student second-grade classes. If the board, if you adopted that goal, that's what you wanted to do, you wanted to decrease class size for your students. And then the superintendent can't move somebody around. Because sometimes you can move people around, right? You can, you have an excess in one grade one year and then you have a decline in that grade the next year. So you can move some people around. But if you can't, and the superintendent says, I need to hire an additional person. If the board says no, you're not providing the resources needed for her to achieve that goal.
But Marion, I'm sorry to cut you off, that would all depend on finance. Like, how can we commit to that if the money's not there?
It's just an example, though.
No, well, no, but I'm just saying, so that would be tough. Because in one way, if she came to us and said that and there was no money, it's not that we're not supporting her, it's that the money's not available.
So given, given that there were financial resources available to do that also. Okay, it's about making sure that you're doing everything that you can that's financially feasible. I don't want you to fall into, you know, into just saying, well, we can't do that because we can't financially afford it. If the superintendent can provide a way for that to happen, and then you say no, you're not going to hire a new person. That's a problem, that's not supporting the superintendent in achieving the district goal. Do you know what, does that make sense?
Wouldn't we know this, though, with her action plan? So wouldn't this be in her action plan then? Because she can't, what you're saying then, if she came to us wanting to hire a teacher, that should be in her action plan. Because you, you feel the goals are achievable today, right? So it would kind of be like, you know, towards the end of the year when you feel like it's not going to be achieved. So wouldn't that be in the action plan today if she knew today she can achieve that goal without?
It generally would be. It generally would be. So you would be, you would be, you would be making sure that you're doing what you can as a board of education to support the achievement of the district goals. Obviously, if there's something that can't be supported, she's going to come to you and she's going to say, we don't have the money to do this. So you're going to know that upfront.
So couldn't she put that in her action item as a forecasted? Hey, we may need two people based on enrollment. Instead of coming out to us at the end of the year, it gives Sharon an opportunity to start budgeting. In the event, we need one, two, three new teachers towards the end of the year based on enrollment. So if we, if we have an action item and says we're, we're doing A, and there is a possibility we may need B, C, and D. Shouldn't that be in one of the action items as a forecasted action item? Or a possible action item based on enrollment and/or whatever other action items behind it are?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, is that, I, I'd rather develop a different goal than that personally.
Well, it's just the way we would be presented in, in the, in the game plan that she presents to us. So she would give us forecasted goals based on all four topics.
Yeah, I, I think you should only set goals that we can achieve with what we have today, right? So I think.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
They're struggling, Marion, although, because I think, first of all, we're an S2 district and financially we're struggling.
Right.
And I think that perhaps the goal is a little too vague.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, did somebody else say that they had a suggestion for a second goal? Did I hear that?
Well, I was, I was going to get to that and just, you know, waiting for you to get to your point where you asked us about our goals. So I wanted to just poll the members and see some ideas what they have at this point, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay, so I'll start down this end.
I mean, as, I don't know if it's even a board goal, but I would like to see the board come together more, more than just this. And I know we talked about the last meeting that we had, to do the, like a once-a-month roundtable with us. Advertised, of course, in the library, but just something to bring us together, like open communication, to go over issues. Maybe once a quarter, just something that we can, you know, informally talk about issues that are in this, in this district. And if there's any issues between us, just kind of all get together. Like a workshop.
Which I think that's what it will be called, Marion, right, a workshop?
Yes.
Because it's not a special board meeting, it's not a board meeting.
Right.
So, and it's, is it a board retreat? I mean, board retreat and workshop, kind of the same thing, right?
They could be, yeah.
And Marion, you would run that, or would that just be on our own? How would that work?
I'm sorry, say that last part.
If, if it was something, would that be something you run or is that something we handle on our own?
It could be both, it could be either one, actually. You, you get credit when I'm there, virtually or in person, so.
This would be one of those things where it's not a, it's not a, a goal deciding thing, it's just a workshop to discuss. But we're not, there's no action taken out of this workshop per se, correct?
Right, right.
So I would like to see once a quarter.
Once a quarter, once a month.
Yeah, I would do more, but I don't know if anybody else would. How's everybody feel about that?
I like a once a month.
I, I, well, and again, with all the meetings that are going on, that's a lot, that's another, you know, you have to take that in consideration.
Okay.
Once a month, so, I mean, I, I would be up for it, but not once a month, you know?
So you want to start with once a quarter?
I don't know, let's see what everybody else feels about doing this. I mean, it's, you know, Donna, don't really.
No, I don't, I don't count, but what, what I've seen in my time that I was here. I think it's important to develop an effective communication plan amongst the board.
So that would help.
I, I think that's very important, and in the time that I've been on the board, we haven't had an effective communications plan. So I think that would bring the board together if there is an established plan with, amongst the board and amongst the administrator and the BA. And I, I think that's important, but I'm not going to be here.
All right, so as far as, go back to Mrs. Claus's.
I think that would help, even what Donna said. I think it'll, the more time we spend together as a group, I think the more we're going to get to know each other's personalities and, you know, just go over the topics openly. And I think it would help us overall. So I'm willing to do however many times you guys want to do, so you guys decide.
Make a motion quarterly, board workshops.
Well, the others didn't chime in yet. The others didn't give their.
So down that end?
I, I like both ideas, I think both ideas would be effective for a board. Constant communication is key to a successful board. So anyway, as long as we're in line and we're following protocol, by all means, yeah, I think they're both effective plans.
I, I, I agree, I like that. I would also, though, like to see us have. I would also, though, like to see us have, I don't know if you wanna call it training. I would like school boards to come in maybe once or twice over, every other month, maybe. And ha, and you could tie the two together, actually, have a training because this is a young board. You know, people are coming and going, and really, it is a young board. And I think a lot of the trainings, in the past, we had them in person in the offices of NJ SBA. A lot of it's been computerized, which I like because you can sit at home and get a lot. I did a lot of meetings and trainings over COVID because I was sitting in my pajamas at home, so it was perfect. But I think they're so important because you're getting the perspective of NJ SBA training us what we should, should not be doing. It ties in all the ethics. And I think as a new, young board, I think that's important. And you could tie both in together.
Yeah, I agree. So, Mary Ann, question. If the board were to have those quarterly workshop meetings and you attended, then they're gaining that hour, and so you're kind of killing two birds with one stone because not only are you achieving the goal, but you're also earning the board certification.
That's what I was just gonna say. These really do feed into one another. And I think that, that by achieving, by working to achieve the board certification, we can do a lot of different things with those six hours that we may, you know, need to be together between January and, and June. So it would be up to you all to decide what kinds of things you wanted to do at those meetings.
Yeah, I, I do feel like we need separate time, though, not just what she'll present, but just things that we could talk about, like the redistricting and things like that. So I do wanna do that, but I also feel like we need our time to go over board business that we can all have a discussion on, so.
The only thing I'd have to, how would that fare with the board as a whole versus our committees? Is that going to conflict because we're doing committees?
I mean, it doesn't necessarily conflict. Some boards do have monthly workshop meetings, regular meetings, and still operate with committees. Some use the monthly workshop in lieu of a committee and just do it as a committee of the whole. Boards have to figure out how they wanna operate. There's no one way to operate as a board, so having a retreat and or doing the quarterly things that you're talking about now with Mary Ann present, I think, is a good way to help you guys figure out what works best for Lacey.
You know, Bruce just threw up an awesome, awesome idea there about having a taller board instead of having three committee meetings and then translating everything, all the documents from each committee to each board member. If we had a.
Committee as a whole.
Committee as a whole, where we all went there and talked about everything together.
I think we'd be there all night. I know curriculum goes over two hours lately. Finance, I can't imagine.
There's gotta be a way to, you know? I think, I think, your, your point's well taken. I think that if we leave our committee structure, but then have our quarterly get-together to discuss things and everything else like that.
The highlights of the committee meetings?
Well, that, yeah, and, and just bring out, you know, the communication of.
The hot topics.
You know, yeah, the hot topics of what's been going on.
I mean, what we could.
Maybe at your workshop is where you do committee reports rather than at your regular meeting, and you could ask questions and everything.
And that could cut down on.
And in theory, it should make your regular meeting go quicker or smoother.
That's a good idea. So then we won't have to do committee reports here. We would do them there. But we, I thought we can't vote on workshops.
No, you wouldn't vote.
You would just do the report.
Oh, you just do the report.
Come here and vote, then. Because we're not voting on committee stuff anyway at the committee time.
I like that.
We're doing it.
Makes it more, and we can do it in the library, right? Like in a.
But, yeah, but again, you know, you're doing it quarterly, so you're talking for a year.
I'll do more, but.
So you still have to work on your committees, you know, leading up to that.
So, Mary Ann, based on everything you're hearing, would you be able to draft something along those lines? That the board will have quarterly workshops where they can report out on what's going on in committees? And I'm, I'm like thinking ahead, like, let's just say we did the meeting for two hours. I mean, it could be more, but we set it for two hours, and maybe an hour would be accomplishing that, and maybe an hour with you to, you know, get the credits toward the board certification. I don't know, I'm just throwing out some ideas.
Or maybe they should be.
I think that can work.
Like one with her and one with us.
Maybe, yeah.
Because that way, we can talk about our, what's going on in the district.
Like on a different.
So we can do training.
Right.
And, yeah.
So maybe of the four, two with you and two with just the board.
Sure. That's what I was referring to earlier, Vanessa, like, we could tie the two together.
Right.
The first part, do a workshop.
Right.
And then Mary Ann can leave, or she could stay if she'd like to. And then we could sit. That way, people are out one night. I mean, everybody has jobs, I know. And it gets after a while, so that would work because we'd all have a night where we'd be together.
So, all right, I think, I think everybody likes that.
Is everybody, all right, so the, the first goal was what we.
Achieve board certification.
The second one is this quarterly thing. Is everybody okay with that as a second goal for us?
Yeah.
Is that good enough, enough goals for everybody here? Is that okay?
Start off, yeah.
That's good?
Good, yeah.
All right.
We're done.
Thank you, sweat.
We're done.
We're done.
We did it. You did it.
Thank you for your help.
You did it. Okay, so listen, I'm gonna type this up, and I will send it to you tomorrow, okay? And then we'll, we'll talk about dates for me to come in and get those scheduled on a calendar so that I know and you know and everybody knows that that's what we're working towards, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Good to meet everybody.
Thanks, your call, thank you for coming out Zoom-wise.
All right, take care.